Okay. Evening. The Meeting of the Borough of Somerville Board of Adjustment will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided that on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, a revised meeting schedule was posted on the outside of Borough Hall, given to the Clerk Administrator, mailed faxed or emailed to the Courier-News, and posted on the Borough website. If any member believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time. These proceedings are judicial in nature. Only those items on the agenda may be discussed or questions asked about. Proper judicial decorum must and will be maintained. Next item was roll call.
Chairman Adair?
Here.
Ed Allen?
Here.
Roberta Carpenitz?
Here.
Morgan McLaughlin?
Here.
Rich O'Neil?
Here.
Brian Budemski?
Here.
John Flores?
Here.
Eric Alvarez?
Here.
And Stuart Daniels is excused.
Okay. Uh, we have a quorum. Do we have any, um, conflicts? None? Okay. Next item, roll call. Um, pleasure, allegiance.
Pleasure, allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item. You have any resolutions? A minute, approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Resolutions? Have any?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Excuse me. Okay, what do we have next, um, Ryan? Um, applications. Our land use applications. Seventy-nine? Okay, Seventy-Ninth Third Street.
Good evening, Mr. O'Grady.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, Mike O'Grady from Savo Shaw Law Firm. Um, before I begin, I'm just gonna hand out, uh, the colorized, uh, version of the site plan.
Okay. Okay. I think we're gonna mark that as a applicant's A-one. Thanks, Mike.
I'll have the architect, or I'll have the engineer describe this when he's, uh, gonna present it as his exhibit. Um, I'm here on behalf of Arc Development Group, LLC, um, in connection with a property located at Seventy-Ninth Third Street, Block Fifty-Nine, Lot Ten. The applicant is a contract per, uh, is a contract purchaser. Uh, property is currently owned, uh, by Sahaj Patel. He's redoing, uh, the building to the left that you see on the site plan. Um, and this application is, uh, a property that's located in the R-two, single-family residential zone. Uh, we're here tonight on a minor subdivision, um, with certain bulk and FAR variances. Uh, the property is currently a pre-existing oversized lot, which we propose to subdivide into two single-family lots. Lot One will contain the existing single-family dwelling, which is presently under renovation pursuant to permits issued by the Borough. Lot Two is proposed to accommodate a new, single-family dwelling, a three-bedroom home with a one-car garage, finished basement, and approximately two thousand, two hundred and twenty square feet of living area. Importantly, this is intended to be a for-sale, not a rental, so we intend to get, sell this, put it on the market, and hopefully get a, a nice new family, uh, here in Somerville. The uses for single-family residential properties, of course, are permitted in the R-two zone. The relief necessitated by the subdivision are the D-floor area ratio variances, where, um, Lot One proposes forty-six point seven percent, and Lot Two proposes fifty-two point two. The maximum FAR in the R-two zone is thirty percent. There's also bulk, or C, variances associated with the minimum lot area. Six thousand square foot's required, and four ta, four thousand, two hundred fifty-one and four thousand thirty-seven are proposed. Lot frontage, fifty-foot required, forty-one point seven-five are proposed for each lot. Lot depth, hundred-foot required. Lot Two is at ninety-five point three-six feet. Front yard, twenty-five foot is required. Lot One is the existing norm, non-conformity at eleven point five feet. The minimum side yard, uh, eight-foot and twenty-foot is required, and Lot One is four point six and nineteen point six feet. The parking spaces, uh, we're proposing, uh, one outdoor space where two are required, and the driveway width, ten-foot is permitted, and Lot Two proposes the twelve through, uh, twelve feet. There's also a street tree waiver, uh, requirement under the ordinance for two, and one exists, and then, of course, we would either plant another tree or make a contribution in lieu thereof. Tonight, we have Sahaj Patel. He's the, uh, owner, uh, the developer. He can answer any questions about, uh, you know, operations or his plan for this particular project or the adjacent property. Our first witness is our professional engineer, Dave Stires, from his firm here in Somerville. We also have Paulo Dantez, our architect. We have some, uh, rendering and, uh, that we will present, and then, to finish off our testimony, we have Paul Ricky from Ricky Planning, our planner.
David, if you'd stand, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
David Stires, S-T-I-R-E-S.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the proposed notice and found it was acceptable as to form and content, the board can act, the board can exercise jurisdiction over this application.
Mr. Stires, uh, tell us about what you've been doing the last, uh, thirty-five years in that area of civil engineering.
We will stipulate to Mr. Stires' credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Adair.
He's appeared, he's appeared before this board more than many of our members.
All right. Um, so, as Michael had indicated, Seventy-Ninth Third Street, there is an existing dwelling, uh, located, um, it's working, right? Yeah. So, we're on the north side of, uh, Third Street, and on the western portion of the subject property is an existing plus or minus seventeen hundred square foot, uh, two, two-story, um, house, single-family house. We intend to, and actually have started renovation on that, um, house. It will remain single-family. We intend to subdivide the property, uh, the, the house was situated such that, you know, a large portion of the prop, the, uh, vacant portion of the property is on the eastern portion of the, uh, subject lot, so we intend to basically subdivide that down the middle, create two four-thousand-square-foot properties, and, uh, construct a second, single-family house on that, uh, second side. That house, uh, would be, um, about twenty-two hundred square feet. Uh, as Michael indicated, it's a one-car garage and a driveway which would accommodate a second vehicle, um, relative to the comments about the, uh, variance for the, uh, western driveway. Uh, we in, plan on extending that so that it is adequate for, uh, two vehicles on-site, which is a minimum of thirty-six feet. So, that would re- eliminate or reduce that, uh, variance or design waiver that we were requesting for parking. The other thing we try to accommodate with the proposal is to provide adequate setbacks based on the R-two zone, uh, for the proposed house. The existing house has a couple existing conditions on the west side, uh, just slightly short on the, um, the western sideline, as well as the, uh, frontage. Again, those are existing conditions that will remain, but we have noticed for those, uh, variances. Utility services will be from the road, typical for a single-family house for the new lot. Uh, I read through, uh, Michael's comments about the stormwater, and what we would plan to do is not increase the, uh, stormwater runoff to that eastern property. Right now, currently, uh, everything runs west to east, down towards, uh, Peters Brook, and, uh, so there's an existing flow of water, uh, in that direction, and we will, we will make accommodations not to increase that runoff onto that, uh, property to our east. So, we, uh, I know he mentioned, uh, dry wells and, uh, possible piping out to the street with the roof leaders. I think that would be the preference, rather than the dry wells. Somerville, the, uh, material, the soil conditions in this town do not accommodate, uh, percolation, uh, very well, so we would, uh, have a preference in, in just trying to get the water off the site, uh, rather than trying to, uh, infiltrate it. That's pretty much it. It's a simple application from an engineering and a subdivision point of view. Um, you know, we do have a planner here that will testify to the, the variance issues.
And, um, I guess there was a comment related to, um, the replacement or the repair of the sidewalks. What's the intention of the applicant?
Yeah, that's, that's a standard comment and, and a condition of all applications, so we would have to, uh, address those issues.
And there's a street tree. Is that intended to be replaced on-site or a contribution made to the tree?
Uh, we'll s, I'll, I'll see if we can accommodate it on-site. If we cannot, we'll have to, uh, provide a contribution.
I have nothing further for the witness.
Anybody from the board have any questions of Mr. Stires?
See, the telephone pole, looks like it's sitting right in the apron of your driveway there.
Ed, it's right to the west of the, uh, proposed driveway?
Can you hear that?
No.
You can't see it on that. Can't tell if that little dial in your plans is?
It's a cer, yeah, circular thing, yeah.
Will there be enough, um, room for ingress and egress and site trims and all that?
Yeah, the, we're actually asking for a, uh, waiver from the ten-foot to make it twelve feet, the driveway.
Uh, Mr. Stires, um, on the, um, east side, yeah, the east side of the property?
Yes.
How, how much room will you have between, for your side yard setback? How much will you?
We have ten point one-five to the face of the building, or the, the side of the building.
The side?
Eight, eight feet is required.
Eight feet on one side?
Yeah.
And twelve on the other for a total of twenty?
Yeah.
On forty-three, uh, on forty-three, uh, feet of width?
That's correct, yep.
Twenty, required twenty feet of side yard setback?
Yes.
Which would actually give you a twenty-foot home.
It's a rather narrow home.
It's gonna be twenty-two hundred square feet?
Twenty-two, twenty-three feet.
Because the one on, um, the one that's already on the lot, that, the, um, former owner appeared before this board probably five, six years ago to take that piece of property, um, and renovate it, and it was gonna be approximately seventeen hundred square feet, when, and that's a, one of those, um, two-and-a-half-story frame colonials, and the preponderance of the homes on Third Street and Second Street are between eleven and thirteen hundred square feet. Now, you're proposing a twenty-two hundred square foot house?
Yeah.
On, on a four-thousand square foot lot?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that does include, we were cautious about the FAR, and we actually did include the, uh, the basement in the square footage.
Okay.
So, it's, you know, not as much, and I, I think Mr. Ricky has, uh, some discussion that he can provide, uh, relative to this, to the size of the house and, and what is appropriate, uh, to, to build in that, uh, neighborhood, in any, in any neighborhood. The, the other thing that I, I overlooked mentioning, uh, Mike did talk about the elevation of the, um, finished floor, and, um, most of the houses on that street have, you know, a front porch and several risers going up to the first floor, so I think being two-and-a-half feet above existing grade is consistent with the, the elements out there, and it's also consistent with the, uh, code where, you know, your wood framing and such have to be a certain de, uh, dimension above the existing grade, or when you build a house, so it's, it's an appropriate height or elevation for that finished floor.
Anybody from the public have any questions of Mr. Stires?
Dave, I have a couple of questions. You, the utilities to the new dwelling gonna be underground?
To the extent we can get them underground, uh, the, uh, the only thing I raised, the only reason I raise that is the electric is above, you know, that, that pole that Ed had mentioned has, uh, a connection to the existing house, and then a connection to the house to the, um, east of the property, uh, overhead. Uh, but if we can, i, if they'll provide it underground, you know, we'll install it underground.
Yeah, I don't think you have a choice because of RSIS, that you have to go underground.
I just hate to fight the P, you know, the utility companies, that's all.
Well, I'm just clarifying what, so, uh, you're proposing the driveway being a, a variance for the driveway width for twelve feet as opposed to ten, the middle of ten?
Yes.
And the driveway on the existing house is going to be, the porch is being taken down, and you're gonna extend that driveway where the porch is to give the exi, the additional length?
That's correct.
So, two cars can come off?
Yeah. Uh, Sahaj has not taken that porch down, uh, pending the, this, uh, this hearing.
Right, the rest of the renovation being the addition's been done?
Right.
The, I don't know if you guys have the architectural plans, but the plan submitted shows siding, but I think it's an ethos, so someone's gonna testify on the, what's the elements of the existing facade are?
Yes.
Okay, so the plan is to take the porch down, the wraparound porch to accommodate the longer driveway?
That's correct, yes. We will provide that thirty-six minimum.
And that driveway width is gonna be ten feet?
Yes.
So, you comply with the ten feet on the existing driveway, asking for a, a variance for the two feet for the new driveway?
That's correct.
And you're gonna, leveling sidewalks, all that stuff, the stuff that's in the report that, that?
Is damaged, yes.
You can comply with, obviously, okay. And the stormwater management, the plan is to get it to the street, or somehow we're gonna get the roof leaders or curb face discharge so that the runoff is, matches the pre-existing?
That's correct.
Anybody else have any, uh?
I have a question.
Please, please come, identify yourself.
Please come forward, give your name and address.
Okay. Uh, my name is Tatianisha Towns. I live at seventy-five Third Street, so I'm on the, the opposite side of the existing house. Um, so my concern, of course, is?
Drainage.
Is, 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 is going to be drainage. Um, as you know, Somerville has been flooding, uh, quite a bit lately, um, especially, you know, with the new construction. You're saying the drainage is going to be underground?
What we're proposing to do is to, uh, not increase the runoff towards your house and collect the roof leaders underground and run them out to the curb so they would be out into Third Street as opposed to running over your property.
Right, 'cause one of the drainage on, on that current property that's being renovated kind of faces our house currently right now.
Oh, I, I know it does, and I, I, I just indicated that to the board, that everything's running west-east right at you right now.
Right.
And we're gonna try to accommodate running that out to the street to reduce the impact.
Okay, and then the, it's, the garage is going to be underground, two, a two-car garage?
It's a one-car garage, and it's two feet below finished grade, so you would go in from the street?
And then straight directly?
No, it wouldn't go up, or it wouldn't go down, it would just go up about a foot and then right into the garage. It's not gonna be underground.
Okay.
It's a, it's that grade.
That, yeah, it's that grade.
And Dave, do, do, could you tie the roof leaders in for the existing house to get rid of some of that runoff, as you said, west to east?
Yes.
To better the situation?
We'll look at that, yeah.
If you're gonna tie them in, the elevations are almost the same, is what I'm getting at, if you look at both proposed lots. If we're gonna run this, that would better the situation, being you would get the runoff from existing footprint to the street as opposed to, onto her property.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's really a?
He's gonna make sure I protect your law.
Dave, there's an existing fence that runs the front. Is that for you? I just had a question report about whether the fence is to remain, it's like a three-foot-high chain link fence. Is that, is that something you, or is that an architect's or Sahaj, or? Is it gonna be gone?
He says it's going.
Gonna be removed?
Fence will be removed, okay.
And the property corners, you gonna put the monuments, the rebar, the caps?
Uh, I, probably just pins are required by the MLUL.
That, you're gonna, right.
Yeah.
You're gonna put, my, my point being, you're gonna put property, you're gonna put the property corners in?
Yeah.
And this is gonna be filed, should the board do it by deed?
Deed is a simpler form of doing it, so we would rather do it that way, the, the plats and the Mylars are?
Right.
Cumbersome. For a minor, certainly easier for our office to do it, yeah.
I'm just clarifying what?
Yeah.
Should the board approve it, what, what the mechanisms would be on that?
Should we include a condition in connection with the, um, my apologies, um, uh, well, uh, rec- recreation or?
Well, it's his discretion. He's saying he wants to file it by deed, which is pretty much standard on minors because of the cost. I agree with Dave.
No, I, I, I was gonna say, because either, either is legally acceptable, so it shouldn't be a problem. Um, and, uh, okay, we don't need to do a, we don't need to do a condition on that.
Now, the normal process, should the board approve this, would be?
Right.
To get the deed recorded, then do the plot plan subsequent to the deed recording, Michael?
Correct.
Is that how you see it?
Mm-hmm.
So, we would get, as a compliance, you'd have a compliance, should the board approve this?
Right.
The filing of the Mylars subdivision, and then we would go through compliance for the stormwater and all that for the lot, once it's been, uh, recorded. Is that how you see it, Michael?
Yeah, that's how we do it in pretty much every town.
Right.
Right, I was gonna, no, I, I, no, it's le, either is legally acceptable, so, I mean, it's really his option. Should we do anything in connection with the fence? Is that a necessary condition?
Uh, he's saying, uh, I'm hearing that?
He's saying he will do it, so?
The fence is gonna be gone. I had a question, what the status of the fence is, and my understanding?
All right.
Is that the applicant is saying that the existing chain link fence is going to be removed.
I don't believe that, then there is a need for a condition with that.
The, uh, fence to the west of the house, do you guys own that? Do you guys own that fence between the two houses?
I think they're on the east side.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the east side. Um, you're on the west?
They're on the west side.
Yeah, they're on the west. So, don't take down their fence.
Right.
Yes, come on up. For the record, identify yourself.
Give your address, please.
Michael Towns. Um, it's a big lot, it's always been a big lot. I was the last one to speak when Mark owned the house. I was, I was pro-fixing the house, because it's, ever since I lived there, it's been abandoned. I would be pro for this house if it was a mother-daughter, but I don't see it like that now. It looks like a money grab. He's developing, he's splitting it.
Do you have a question for the witness, or you?
Yes, what's the question?
Yeah, this, this is a question for the engineer.
Yeah, it's, rather than a statement, it should be a question.
There'll be a time for his comments.
Okay, I'll wait for the comments.
Okay.
And can I have a copy of this?
Sure.
For the record, that's applicant's Exhibit A-one.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions on Mr. Stires', uh, on Mr. Stires' presentation? Thank you, Mr. Stires.
Thank you. Our next witness is Paulo Dantez, our architect. Could you, for the record, um, identify?
I need to swear I'm in. If you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you, God?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure. Uh, name is Paulo Dantez, first name is Paulo, P-A-U-L-O, last name is Dantez, D-A-N-T-A-Z.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Grady. Your witness, sir?
Uh, Paulo, can you give the benefit, uh, of your education and your professional licenses?
Sure. Uh, graduated from the New Jersey Institute of Technology in two thousand and two, with a bachelor's in architecture, been licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and seven. Uh, have been in various boards in Monmouth, Union County, um, this will probably, this is my first time in, uh, Somerville, um, and my license is current.
Okay, thank you.
And could you just go, uh, first, I think we need to identify, uh, the colorized?
Yes.
Rendering as A-two. Uh, could you provide the date of the revisions and then just describe this exhibit?
Please write A-two on it and give the, uh, well, it's, you're, you're introducing it tonight, but the data, the data revision should be indicated on the plans in any event.
It has six seventeen, um, due to the fact that when we, when submit drawings, they come in color, but they print in black and white, so we still have it as two thousand twenty-five, uh, June of, uh, of seventeen.
Okay, all right.
Could you kindly go over, um, what your vision is for this?
Sure. So, the property is located at Seventy-Ninth Third Street. Uh, we are proposing a single-family, uh, home, uh, building footprint of nine hundred and thirty-four square feet. Um, we're looking at a livable area on the first and second floor of one thousand, five hundred seventy-nine square feet, um, including the garage is two hundred eighty-one square feet. Uh, the property is currently vacant, where we're being sub-divided. Um, what we are proposing within this home is a twenty-one-foot, uh, five-inch and forty-four feet, six inches deep, um, home. Uh, within that basement floor plan, on Sheet A-one-on-one, we're proposing a finished basement, six hundred forty-one square feet. We'll have a mechanical room at the rear, which will provide the heating and cooling from the furnace and also water heater. Um, adjacent to it, we're looking to pro, provide a full bathroom, a tub, toilet, and sink. The remainder will be recreational, um, or ceiling height that we're proposing is eight feet, four inches. We'll have a access interior stair to access the first floor and also the garage level. Uh, the construction type will be a CMU wall foundation, uh, with concrete slabs along, not only at the base, at the basement, uh, the garage, and also at the porch. Our proposed first floor plan, number two and Sheet A-one-on-one. We have a livable area of nine hundred and thirty-four square feet within that first floor. We have a main entrance facing, uh, with a porch facing the third, Third Street. Um, the layout is consistent of an open plan towards the rear, where we have a kitchen, eating area, and living room. Uh, we're proposing ceiling heights of eight feet. A prefabricated gas fireplace is being proposed, U-shaped kitchen with the peninsula, and additionally, we're looking to provide a half bathroom, and again, the stair to have accessibility upstairs with some type of access to the one-car garage. On our proposed second floor plan, number three on Sheet A-one-on-one, we're proposing three-bedroom, including the master. The master bedroom will consist of walk-in closet, a master bathroom, double sinks, toilet and large shower. Bedroom one and two, each will have their own closet, shared with a whole bathroom, and we're looking to provide also a laundry closet. Lastly, we're proposing a drop-down ladder just to access the attic furnace. It will not be finished, it's just for mechanical purposes. If I could go back to the renderings? The total height that we're proposing in this home is approximately twenty-eight feet, five inches to the top of the main, uh, hip ridge. Uh, the architectural characteristics and some materials that we're proposing aesthetically, um, not only from the neighborhood, but also from the client, uh, the materials we're proposing, uh, in the front is hardy board, clapboard siding on the left side, and also a hardy board, uh, vertical siding on the right side where the garage is mainly there. Uh, we're proposing, uh, the main roof to be ashfall shingles, the main canopy at the entrance will be aluminum, uh, roofing, and then the sides and the rear will be provided with vinyl siding. and then the sides and the rear will be provided with vinyl siding. Uh, the colors that we tried to introduce is sort of a sterling gray, uh, with two shades on the right side of a little bit darker gray. We tried to, uh, break down the, the facade, uh, not only horizontally, but also vertically by introducing, uh, canopies and recessing some of the elements, as long as with the roof, so we don't have this continuous, um, monolithic elevation of facade.
I have no further questions for the architect.
Anybody from the board have any questions of the architect?
Yeah, I do. The, uh, you're gonna air-condition this place?
Yes.
Where you put the condenses?
I know you were gonna ask me, so we're looking maybe perhaps putting it at the rear, next to where the stairs are.
I didn't, I didn't understand what you just said, I.
At the, at the rear, next to the stairs, at where the sliding door is, at the rear, next to the eating area on the first floor? Should I?
That's fine, yes, you spoke quickly, so.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
You said you're thinking about putting them there.
That's fine, we can add, that can be a condition.
Yeah.
I had some questions about, uh, one of the, either the east or in the western, one has one window, one has two windows. It's a huge wall for one window, is there any consideration to adding windows or breaking up that facade?
We could do that, um, the only reason we try not to put too many windows towards the side is just create a little bit more privacy for the neighbors, but, um, but we're okay to add if need to, that'll be fine.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what the board's feeling on that is.
Especially like, um, I would recommend one or two, especially that powder room, perhaps a window there would be nice to have. Um, and then I could put, um, additionally, one, also would come in in the front entrance, maybe towards the right side of the stair. We could adjust those things, yes.
So the AC compressor is gonna be on the rear, the northern side, no, no, sorry.
Uh, it will be directly where the living room is, next to the, um, the deck area.
So you can provide some, uh, noise, that data calculations to show it complies with, with noise coordinates, okay?
Yeah, usually we either put some type of, um, fencing with some type of bushes and things like that, just to at least visually take that away. And additionally, with the sound as a also attenuation.
So the basement won't be, it won't be a bedroom, it's shown as.
It, it cannot, so, it, it has no bedroom, it has no egress windows, it has nothing, it's strictly for recreation purposes.
So the three sides are vinyl sliding, the front is hardy plank?
Yes, so we're proposing anything that is facing face-wise.
You have a cement board, right, on the front?
Yes, it is. So when I say front, I mean introducing it here, 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 a little bit on the sides and then the front, and then once eventually comes around, then that becomes the siding. So I just wanted to make sure that these sides at least has still the hardy board, hardy planks.
So all the exterior lighting will be residential style in accordance with.
It will, and we're introducing it that everything is kind of downlight, like, for example, even on our front porch, we have, uh, recessed lighting on the canopy, so everything is being pushed down.
Is there any landscaping proposed, foundation landscaping, or, there's nothing on Dave's plans showing any.
I, I, I usually don't show it, I leave it to the, to the engineer, but I'm sure we could propose some landscaping.
Yeah, I, what I, what I would suggest is that we defer to Mr. Cole's wisdom on, uh, appropriate.
Local shrubbery and stuff like that.
I just threw out some foundation planning, something to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Can be around for him to grow?
So there's gonna be a hatch you set on for the attic, and you're gonna have the forced air unit in the attic?
In the attic, that's it, the furnace.
So it's forced air heat and AC? So right now, once the two properties are divided, what will be the, the visual divider between the two?
I'm not sure if they're gonna put a fence, but a fence could be an option, um, to divide that. Um, I know that fences usually go to the front of the facade of, of the property or start in the back, but I'll leave that as, you know, uh, for the owner, for the engineer to accommodate that. But I would, if we have dogs and things like that, it's always nice to be fenced there.
Okay, any other questions?
Could you describe the basement again?
Sure, so the basement is approximately six hundred and fifteen square feet. The purpose of the basement is mo- uh, is just for recreational purposes. What we do have in addition to that, we have a mechanical room, where our furnace for the heating and cooling will be provided, we'll give act, uh, we'll give the heating and cooling not only for the basement, but also for the first floor. We're also gonna have the water heater there, that's what's gonna accommodate for the hot water coming into the whole entire home. And then we also provided a full bathroom there with a sink, toilet and tub, I guess just so we don't have to go upstairs to use the bathroom.
Sink, toilet and tub?
Mm-hmm.
Tub would be a shower?
Uh, I have it as a tub, I don't have it as a shower, just have a tub, uh, tub shower, I guess, that's what it is.
It's, it's kind of unusual if you're not gonna have a, a bedroom down there to have a tub.
Right.
Um, so, I'm not gonna say that's not unusual, but sometimes to get certain assessments, a full bathroom versus half bathroom has tendency to give a little bit more, you know.
Is there any intention to use this as a living space, you know, in other words, another bedroom, another aspect of rec- uh, aspect of living space? You say, you said recreational and.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like you to clarify what that, what exactly that's gonna mean.
Uh, recreation is, once a homeowner buys it, it could be used as anything, as a TV room, as a game room, anything in that recreation portion, no, we're not looking, has not been expressed to me that it's gonna be a bedroom, but we are providing a space to provide some type of rec. I have kids, they need space to play, it becomes a playroom.
Yeah. Can we see the basement plan again?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, the, the, the board doesn't have copies of the drawings, so it might be beneficial to show the elevations and the floor plan on the screen. So that, it's the, uh, leftmost?
Yes, it is, uh, oh, right there.
There you go.
Mm-hmm, a little bit.
Okay.
And I'll point out, well, this is indicated with room names.
Will HVAC be used in the, uh, will there be vent, venting and things like that in the basement?
Yes, it should, we need circulation up there.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no access to the basement from garage?
So let me just put that, um, we, we testified that we're gonna have it only two and a half feet from the finished floor, which then we need the wood framing, so we're looking this thing to be like ten inches from the ground, the CMU, the actual, uh, you know, foundation, so I, I, even if we put a window, has to be a window well, the most. And I'm not even proposing windows.
Why not?
Um, I personally don't like it, um, water, leaves, there's a lot of things that accumulate.
I understand the intent, but if it's for sale, I know the applicant has no control about who's buying it.
True.
And there might be some consid- consideration may be given to providing a second means egress, even though the testimony is no bedroom. If it, if you have someone playing down there or.
Sounds more like a studio report.
It smells like a bedroom.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So.
Wait, wait a minute. I've got a house that's a hundred and twenty-five years old, I've got a basement. Nobody lives down there, but certainly somebody could, and no matter what we say, the owner's gonna do what they're gonna do, so should we forbid the basement entirely or forbid the subdivision entirely? I think we're getting kind of lost in the weeds here.
No, no, I'm just suggesting, Rich, that there'd be some kind of light in there or second means egress to this new construction, because no one really knows what's gonna be down there in ten years.
Well, probably larger trains that, I would guess, but, but the window wells accumulate trash, leaves, raccoons, everything.
Raccoons, that'd be true.
I mean, they, they just do, they're a nuisance.
Bat, bats too, by the way.
They eventually leak, so if we're gonna talk about window wells, we might as well plant cattails in there to start with. You, you know, I think we're kind of, this is a house, do I want to see somebody living in the basement, absolutely not. If somebody buys a house and they put their kids down there, what can we do about it, nothing.
I, I also, also, also want to mention that we, we also limit it to the size of the home, right? So giving another space for, um, like a family room or something like that, it just seems feasible to use the basement.
Is there a, um, is there a waterproofing plan, and if there's waterproofing plan available, where would the water be diverted to?
Um, I think that we actually, um, so we'll, we'll have a perimeter, uh, drain, and we'll also have a sump pump, and that will be discharging, um, into the, the gutter system or the drainage system, and then it will seep away.
So that would be an internal waterproofing system then?
Internal and external as well, so we'll, we'll, we're having all our gutters, all the rain, roof water, coming down and being dispersed away from the home, uh, we're also gonna have, or, or, or damp roofing around the foundation along with the perimeter, and usually that satisfy any water come, penetrating the, the basement.
And the code requires a sump pump, so the sump pump will be.
It, it's really weird, like, I have to bring the water in to bring it out, but that's what the co.
But you can certainly tie it into the roof layers.
That's what I mean, and then they will disperse, mm-hmm, well.
Just as a point of clarification, I only ask about the use of the basement because I represent other municipalities where that's an issue where it's, becomes another limit, living unit, and, you know, obviously it has not only tax implications, but the health implications, things like that, so I, I routinely ask that question, I'm certainly not trying to, pressure the applicant in any way, but for purposes of, of complete record, that's why I ask it.
Well, attics and basements are problems generally.
Yeah.
Especially in a town this old, and do we want anybody living in either one of them, no, but this is an application for a house, and we could tell them, well, okay, you know, you can't own a horse, I mean, we can make all kinds of rules, but bottom line is, it's a house, you know?
Exactly, no, I, I, I concur with you, I, just as I say, just wanted to get it in the record.
I guess, I guess the issue for me is that there's a bathtub down there, and it, not, not saying it's gonna create a situation where it turns into a living space, but it opens up the possibility of that becoming a li- more, it cre- increases the possibility of that becoming a living space, and I don't know if that's within our jurisdiction to say no bathtub down there, but it's just a, a point I think we need to discuss.
One, one thing that other towns have required for applicants is to do a deed restriction. I think we've done them for dens in this town.
Oh, yeah.
So we could do a deed restriction and record it that it can't be used as a, as a, as a bedroom. I mean, it's, uh, another layer of protection, I mean, of course, your resolution would be enforceable with zoning, but we could, we have no objection to filing a deed restriction, that just memorializes for future owners that it can't be used as a, as a bedroom.
That would be up to the board, uh, certainly, that's their discretion, it's discretion, I mean. Anybody else have any questions of the, uh, architect? Anyone from the audience have any questions of the testimony just given by the architect? Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Ogradik.
Thank you. Um, our final witness is Paul Ricky from Ricky Planning.
Come on up.
Real quick question, Mike?
Yeah, just come up to the mic.
I see the numbers on here. It's like, he put the, the footage of his lots, but he didn't do the footage of the other lots, it, it seems like, like, art, these lots are not that big, it seems like it's, it's a little smoke and mirrors there.
Well, our next witness will testify as to the adjacent lot sizes and structures.
Well, I lived there, I don't, nobody know a testifying, but Haza's house is not that big, so it's like he made the lots look, look.
Thank you.
It's to scale.
Okay, next. Please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God? I do. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, sir. It's Paul Ricky, R-I-C-C-I.
Mr. Ricky, um, you're.
Familiar with Mr. Ricky?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I do, I'm not gonna speak to it right away, but I, I do have a handout for, for the board, um, to discuss the, the characteristics of the area, that's for you and then here's. I think we should mark that as applicant's A3. Did I just keep my one for myself? I mean, before I, I enter my direct testimony, I, I'm, I'm in a town that, that is very concerned about basement planners, I'm a, I'm a planner in, in five towns that I represent, and when, when I looked at this, one of the things to consider as well is that there's no exterior door that's being proposed, there's no direct access, and one of the things that I, I think as a planner, as a general planner in a town, that you like to see is that any of those rooms have to go through common space, and it's not like a direct way in, um, I know under the building code that, that bedrooms are not permitted unless there's a secondary form of egress.
Right.
Uh, the building code would allow you to have the, you know, the summer kitchen of Italian descent, right? Um, and it, and it does allow bathroom space, but that bedroom is not allowed under the building code unless there's another form of, of access.
Right.
I personally believe as a planner is that the access is the key, you can't, it's hard to rent something out if somebody has to come through your common living area.
Kitchen.
To get there, so if the design has that element, it's, my opinion, it's not usually a problem, maybe it's, you know, it's, you know, someone might sleep down there, they fall asleep at night, but that's not the intention. As, as, as part of my review, um, I, I did prepare, uh, a fairly detailed outline, so I, I may have to rely on it to give you some facts and figures more than I may traditionally do, but we're seeking the FAR variance, right? We have different levels of proof that we have to provide, um, that FAR variance has a lower level of requirements than a use variance. Uh, we don't have to reconcile the emission of this use from, from your master plan. The key of the positive criteria is, is the ability for this site to accommodate the problems associated with the increased FAR, and I'm gonna talk about that, and for all variances, we have to demonstrate that these variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good in your zone plan. For the existing condition variances that aren't being exacerbated, we believe for those that it's appropriate to testify it under the C1 hardship provisions for legally non-conforming condition that exists today, that's not being exacerbated, and then new conditions, uh, we're seeking those variances under the flexible C2 criteria that we can show that the, essentially the, the benefits outweigh the detriments, and it results in, in sound land use planning, uh, uh, essentially to, to summarize. I mean, I, I was at the site, I looked at your master plan, um, I spoke with the project team, and I, I did prepare some, some information about the area, um, I mean, your, your master plan has a lot of policies of housing and the like, and, and I, I can go through those in, in detail later or, or more, but, I mean, the policy here that I think is most advanced is, you know, to prevent the deterioration of individual structures from exerting deleterious effect on the surrounding area by adopting reasonable regulations, um, and it goes on to talk about having a ra- rarity types of housing types and the like, the existing home, I looked at it from over the years on, um, on street view, and then today I saw some of the improvements that were being undertaken by the applicant. This is an older area of town, it's an area of town that I think could benefit from revitalization and, and new structures. The neighborhood I'll talk about is, is somewhat, uh, varied, and I'm gonna get into some details about that in terms of lot widths, I find, uh, the width of a lot in an area such as this, on, on small lots, is really the defining characteristic of how development occurs in a neighborhood. Uh, there's many lots here that are, that are thirty-three point three feet wide, and clearly, a, a house on a thirty-three-foot-wide lot is, orients itself differently, the shape of the house, whether you can have parking, how close it is to adjoining lots and the like, and then there's lots that are larger in the neighborhood as well that I'll talk about, and I'm gonna give you, uh, summaries of, of, what I show in yellow, um, and orange for the, for the, what I found to be the, really the area of influence here, the block, in those, in those characteristics. One of the things that, that I did, I did find, um, interesting, number one, the house is located, we'll call it looking in plan view on the left side of the lot, that house can remain without any demolition. That house can remain without any demolition. It seemed to me that, that was deliberately placed in that fashion. With the anticipation potentially of another home. They didn't put the house in the middle of the lot. They put it all the way to the left. This lot is, um, not the widest lot per se, because some lots are, are turned. But it's essentially the widest lot in the area. And, and that's a distinguishing characteristic in how it presents itself. Uh, in the neighborhood. What I did find, um, compelling is, is, and I think Mr. Chairman talked about. The, some of the sizes of the lots and what's appropriate here, which we'll, we'll talk about. Is that this application has a non-conforming side yard setback on the left side of the property. It's under five feet. It's my notes, four point something feet. That's not changing. The front yard does not comply, cause it's at, come on the front of my notes here.
Less than twenty-five feet.
Eleven point five feet, but otherwise what the applicant is proposing is that all the setbacks, the side yards. Uh, because the, the combined side yard, like for the, for example, for the existing home, the side yard and the other side comes to about nineteen point six feet. And then all the other yards, front, rear, height and the like are all in compliance. Some of the FAR, um, standards that are creating or raising it have to do with the basement. Cause that basement is counted as FAR as a planner. That's not creating mass in the neighborhood or, or making it feel oversized. Or, or out of place, but it's regulated, uh, under your ordinance. To talk about the lot area and density, I'm showing twenty-three lots on Third Street. Between Center Street and, and Hamilton Street. And the average lot area for the block and because I didn't use the GIS, I actually, you know, averaged it and calculated it like very close. Cause there's different lot lines, like if there was a lot line that was one-ten and one was one-twenty on side lot lines, I would average that. And then do the calculation that way. So it's, 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 without survey data, it's very close to being, um, exact. So for the average lot area for the block, it's, it's five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five square feet. Eighteen out of the twenty-three properties are under the six thousand square foot minimum for the block. But I also think it's important to, to look at this block from a, from a density perspective. Uh, as you see in the exhibit, the, the, the homes shadowed in, in yellow. Uh, are single family and then in orange are two-family homes. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six two-family homes. On this block as well. So if you look at the block from, uh, based on the density or the number of units to lot size. The average square foot for the block comes down to four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one square feet. And that relates to a density of nine point seven-six units per acre for this block. And then the applicant is proposing ten point two-five units per acre on the one lot and ten point seven-nine units per acre. Where five point two-six units per acre exist today. So we're slightly more dense. The lots are slightly smaller than on average. But it's, it's within the realm of, of the block and it's not a substantial change. Overall, um, when you look at the block, a couple of characteristics, and I'm gonna talk about this when I talk about the, the side yards is that. You can see on the southern side of the street, there's, there's many of those lots, the narrow ones that are, that are thirty-three point three feet in width. Some of those are twenty-six feet or so with, with two family homes on them. Like block fifty-seven, lot seventeen, that's twenty-six feet wide with a two-family home. Um, fifty-seven, eighteen is twenty-six feet wide with a two-family home as well. So so, some of the lots, like lots nineteen through twenty-six or so, they're about a hundred and seventy feet deep. So that's increasing the lot size for the block, but if anyone's driven down the, the block, you don't see those rear yards. And how you feel and how this block presents itself, it's really from those lot widths along the frontage. And I hope the board takes that into consideration, uh, when they evaluate, uh, this property or this, uh, application. Regarding the, the four area ratio. Uh, a- again, the, the prevailing characteristic here to me was that. How does this building have the ability to accommodate the problems with the increased floor area? And, 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 and in both buildings is that it meets all the setback requirements for the zone. So when you look at the zone, the zone is based upon standards for a lot that's six thousand square feet. And despite the fact that these lots are undersized in the forty-two hundred square foot range for one. We still meet all those setback requirements. So in terms of a bulk perspective, these homes won't look too close to their neighbors. Or, uh, in my opinion, at a scale with the neighborhood. I tried to compare, um, the size of the homes to the neighborhood and I got various data. I believe that when we present the information for the application, you heard from, uh, Mr. Stires of, of twenty-two hundred square feet. That's counting basement space. And when you look in the tax cards. It's not counting basement space and I'm not sure it's how entirely accurate it is. But at least for the block, the tax cards are identifying square footages of the, what I believe to be the upper portions of the building. Ranging from three of them with nineteen hundred and sixty-four square feet to a low of. Ten thousand and eight square feet. So, um, the, the homes will not be, it, it's a narrow home. It's not gonna feel, in my opinion, overly large and it's not gonna be bigger than, um, what's out there. The fact that it meets all the setback requirements, and I'm gonna talk about that, let me talk about that in a second as well. For the lot width. The average lot frontage for the block is, is forty-two feet. Uh, in this regard, I counted the corner properties with the narrower widths, because that's typically how homes are built. On the narrower, the frontage is usually on the, the narrower portion, uh, of the lot. If you take the total, total linear feet of the block. Because there's, there's one family homes and two family homes, if you look at it almost like kind of considering density. That's a home for every thirty-three point three feet. The minimum lot width here is, is fifty feet for the district. Thirteen out of the twenty-three properties have lot widths that are under, uh, the fifty feet. And thirteen of those properties have lot widths that are under thirty-five feet. And there's lot widths as, as narrow as twenty-six feet, um, on the block. And again, i- it's my opinion as a planner, it's that, that, that width and how that width corresponds to the block. That sets the tone of the character of the neighborhood. Um, an eighty-two, well, eighty-two point five foot wide lot here is, is significantly larger than the, the average of the block here. And it's somewhat out of place in this context, um, in my opinion. For the front yard, again, uh, we would meet the front yard on the new home. The existing home is existing, uh, non-conforming. When you look at the side yard setbacks, um, the, the code requires eight feet for one side, twenty feet combined. So when you look at that from a proportional standpoint, that means on the smallest lot, that's permitted fifty-foot wide lot. Your zone plan anticipates that forty percent of that lot would be as open space. Again, the existing non-conforming side yard setback is fourteen point six feet. So that's combined with a fifteen-foot side yard setback on the opposite side to be just shy at nineteen point six feet. That nineteen point six feet represents side yards of, of forty-six point nine percent of that lot width. So it's not gonna feel tight. Uh, and, and again, there's, there's many lots on this, on this block that are thirty-three feet wide. Where those homes are, are very close to the lot widths. I don't have survey data. If you drive there, um, you can see it on the aerials. The aerials, because this is prepared to GIS and this is county information and the like, I probably should introduce this how I prepared it and the like. It shows houses going over property lines because it's, it's not survey accurate.
If you have prepared your own materials, I think you should submit them as evidence.
Yes. Um, this was, the, the exhibit is entitled, uh, aerial zoning and land use. Uh, and it's prepared in a geographic information system. So the aerial is all to, to scale. Scale's in the, the bottom right of the, of the sheet. North is essentially straight up. The tax map information is provided through, uh, New Jersey GIN. Um, that's, um, an aerial, uh, excuse me, it's a online service that provides this information. Um, I do show the, the, the boundary line with your R three zone from, uh, zoning information that I received from your county. Verified to, to be accurate, but this whole area is essentially in the southern part of the town. That's in one of your, uh, established, uh, R two districts. The aerial, the most recent aerial photography I, I label for, for this type of GIS system is two thousand, uh, and twenty.
I believe the board can take judicial notice of that information.
Thank you. So a- as a planner, I think it's also important to also for the board to consider a, to consider need, uh, today. I'm, I'm a planner in town, uh, in, in many towns and I know and it's supported by information that's provided by New Jersey Future, which is a think tank. That there are a million units of, of short of housing and that is, they say is proportionally worse, uh, in New Jersey. And the fact that when mortgage rates were very low a few years back and they've since shot up and remain up. Many people thought that housing prices will drop because of the increased cost of housing and that has not occurred. Why has that not occurred? Because of the demand and need for housing today. So as a planner, I think it's important to recognize that this type of housing is needed. And today, a lot of the focus is on, uh, affordable housing. Um, in places like Somerville, a lot of the emphasis historically is housing around the train, affordable housing. But this is still, in my opinion, a, a small scale in today's standards, single-family home that would provide. A type of housing that is in need and I believe is a form of, of workforce housing. And it's, it'd be a new structure on a block that I think would benefit from it. So some of the benefits from just the development, you know, you heard from the architect, we have a tastefully designed home. That we believe would fit into the area nicely. Again, that reinvestment into the neighborhood. And what I liked to see when I was out there, that the applicant was, seemed to me completely, uh, rehabilitating the existing home. And, and bringing that co- home up the code and standards, uh, as well. So both homes will be nice new improvements. Which I believe that the, the neighborhood will benefit from that. And that can only be good for property values, in my opinion, even that amount of praiser, uh, as well. Uh, and for these reasons, I believe this application advances several purposes of the municipal land use law. Uh, it promotes the, the general welfare through sound land use planning, purpose G. Provides sufficient space, uh, for the needs of New Jersey citizens that, that needed housing. And those visual improvements, I think are dramatic, that will promote a desirable visual environment. Pretty much for the reasons I already mentioned, I believe that the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good in the zone plan. Um, these homes are, are not gonna be placed any closer than what's required for a larger lot to, to the neighbors. I believe that the homes are, are in scale with the neighborhood. So no new non-conformities are, are proposed there. I believe that's in keeping with the rhythm and platting of, of the, the block overall. I personally, as a planner, believe that having lot sizes that are more similar commensurate with the area. I believe that sound land use planning, it encourages homes that would be more consistent with the area over time. Rather than having an oversized large lot where something that can be built that just feels out of character. Because generally speaking, if, if the lot's bigger, you know, and someone can build more there. Often a developer will take advantage of that. And I think that would be a detriment to this neighborhood rather than a benefit. And having lots more in character with the area would be a benefit. And while I said some of them are, it's slightly undersized overall. It's overall more conforming. And for all these reasons, I believe this, this application results in sound land use planning.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions on Mr. Ricky? Anybody from the board have any questions?
If, um, if that basement is used as a, a bedroom, for example, and it be, does become a four-bedroom. And I know we can't control any of that. If it does become a four-bedroom, what does that do to all your analysis about the density of the development? And all of a sudden, there's maybe a car on the street instead of just two, cars fitting in the driveway. All of a sudden, there's more people around. What does that, how does that change all that?
Okay, let me just clarify. I believe we're a two-bedroom home today.
No, three.
It is three, okay, okay. Uh, if it was a, if it was a fourth bedroom, that would require an additional half parking space. But by a matter of, of law, um, because there's no egress being proposed to that outside, that cannot be considered, uh, a bedroom. I looked at the area, I don't know how many bedrooms are each home. That's a difficult number, uh, to evaluate. That's why I looked at it by, uh, units, but, um, for, for me. I'm concerned more about like the mass of a structure and how it represents itself in the neighborhood. And I thought because the basement was being counted, that was kind of artificially raising that square footage and making it, the variances seem worse than they truly are. I think most people utilize their basement, whether it's finished or not in, 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 in some manner. And that's not changing how that building appears from the street. Uh, I, I think this is a one-family home. I don't think each family is different and I think often. A home of this size is not one that's gonna encourage a very large family. Uh, I represent a community where, um, it's often where they're, they tell me that they have thirteen children. And they're trying to build very large homes on very small lots for that, for this, for that reason, cause they have thirteen children. This is not that type of application or context that I believe. Nick Cannon or Elon Musk.
I've got a question. It might not be for you, it might be for the architect or the engineer. But it appears to be a lot of concerns about the basement usage. Would it be advisable to put just a, I'm not talking about a, it's about a residential sprinkler system, not a, not a fancy one, just off the domestic?
I can't answer that question.
I, I didn't think you could. I, I figured I'd start somewhere.
Well, it's gonna be sold. They're, they're building on its back.
Yeah, I agree, but there seems to be a lot of concern about what, no, we, nobody, we'll get out of the basement, no windows. Tie something off to the domestic system, it's just a plumbing issue. It's not a, not a big deal. There's no downside to it.
Well, yeah, Rich, that goes back, there's, there's a proposed finished basement on the existing house, which is not, Paul, it's not you. I was hoping, Mike, that you have the drawings or who's gonna, is Sahaj gonna talk about what's going on with the existing house?
If, yeah.
Come on up and let us where you're in.
Can the drawings we put up, do we not have the drawings?
No, we didn't bring a copy of the drawing.
All right, this was the board, there's a finished, it's shown on the plans I reviewed as an optional finished basement. With a full bath and a playroom and a washer and dryer area, very similar to the proposed house. But it's shown as optional and the construction permit issued for it was for a finished storage space. I ran that down. He, I think he has two construction permits for the existing dwelling, one's for the addition.
Correct, and one's for the finished basement.
And the other one's for finishing.
Let me swear a minute. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sahaj Patel, last name P A T E L.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ogronik, your witness.
Sahaj, could you just walk through, um, when did you purchase this property and, and what are you doing for the rehabilitation on the existing unit?
We purchased the property in mid, uh, twenty twenty-three and we created a new floor plan where. The first floor was an open concept with a living room, dining room and kitchen, along with the powder room. The second floor consists of three bedrooms with two full bathrooms, one being a master, uh, bathroom and one being a, a top bathroom for the hallway. The basement has a full bathroom as well as a laundry room and a little rec, rec room. Which cannot, in my opinion, even be used as a bedroom. Cause it's, it's, uh, it's kind of like a hallway, cause of the size of the basement. It's not a very large basement. Even getting a couch down there would be very hard. So I don't see that basement being used for anything other than the laundry room that's down there and maybe, um, some gym equipment.
Right, Sahaj, the ceiling height was shown as six, six feet, three inches, right?
Right, it is very, it is very low.
So it's a very low ceiling height, the existing.
The duck work is actually exposed still because it's so high, it's so low.
Right.
If we were to, if we were to frame around the duck work, we would be very, very low. So, um. So a lot of the ceiling is unfinished, but the walls have been finished. And it is for storage and as a laundry room.
Is this the house that's currently being renovated?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, we're talking about, okay, thank you.
There's a different architect that did the plans for the renovation.
Yes.
It's Robert horrendas.
Robert Hernandez.
horrendas, right, right. Just so that you don't have the board.
I have a question, small house. You have two bedrooms up on the second, or two bathrooms, full bathrooms on the second floor.
Correct.
Three bedrooms.
Correct.
And now you have a full bathroom in the basement. That's so small, so skinny, so low, but there's a small bathroom down in the basement.
Right.
What's the concept here?
So the concept is if you have some gym equipment and you're working out down there and you want to shower, you could shower, or if you have a dog and you want to give the dog a bath, it's a, it's a large pan shower where the dog could go in and you can wash your pet, dog, cat, whatever it may be. And it's also close to the laundry room. And so when you're doing laundry, you might need to go to the bathroom to wash your hands and X, Y, and Z, and you might use the bathroom. It's just an added, it's an added feature to the home, I believe.
Is there a second needs of egress to get into the basement?
No.
And so, so you're saying the home that you're currently renovating? And I went by it, it's looking good, so I appreciate the work there. That basement, the ceiling height is pretty low, six feet?
Correct.
Three inches.
Three inches. The basement in the new home that's being proposed is eight feet, four inches, is that correct?
I believe so.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed to admit it, but I will. I watch House Hunters, and I've got to tell you, the bathtub in the basement is very sought after. Even though this is a three bedroom house, it would not be uncommon for a couple to purchase it because they each want their own office. I think this is a great design, I think it would be beneficial to the neighborhood. I think we cannot, I understand the concerns about the basement, but I don't think it's fair to project what could happen in that basement because we have no idea. I mean, you know, somebody could put three kids in one bedroom, for goodness sakes. So I think we're focusing on the basement, I understand the concerns. But this is not uncommon among, among, among real estate, and it's not, and it's valuable. Many people find that valuable, especially if somebody's got a big dog and they want to, and have a Great Dane and you have to wash it, the basement bathtub is great. I don't have a big dog, but you know, somebody who does, they'd love that, so.
Washing any dog is a challenge.
Yeah, any dog is a challenge, but.
Cats are.
And I think the point about the gym, I think that, that's, that's an excellent point. I think we're focusing a little too much on the basement. And maybe we got to try to move beyond it. Just my thoughts.
If we're talking thoughts, I suspect if you tried to move a family or the new buyer tried to move a family into the basement, there might be a phone call made pretty quickly.
Oh, I know there would be.
And if it were ever to be a rental 15 years from now, it's inspected.
Yeah.
And it would be flagged by your, I can guarantee you, it would be flagged by Somerville.
That's the problem that I have with it possibly becoming a rental.
Yeah.
Because I've known that, I walked that neighborhood all the time, and Mr. Patel and I have spoken. The house that he's working on, Mrs. Vanderport's house, somebody came to us six, seven years ago to renovate that piece of property. Unfortunately, the gentleman passed away. His son did not want to continue with it and sold the property. And Mr. Patel's been working on it. And he's taken some of the things that we approved and other things that we had approved he's not going to do, part of the expansion. My problem is rentals. This is one of the most eclectic neighborhoods in town. Old, I live right around the corner, my house is 121 years old. And the house next to me is 123 years old. And the one next to that's 125 years old, it seems like they built that style every two years. It's changing. And some of it's not for the better. Because at one time, most of those homes, even the two families, were owner occupied. And now we have a lot of absentee landlords. I've known Mr. Patel, I know his father, and he's not that kind of landlord, he's a good landlord. He's got another property going on down at the other end of Third Street that he's been working on. And it's been a vast improvement. And his father had a good reputation as a good landlord in town. My problem is density. I know that there are a lot of small lots, we have lots on that block. There's like fifty by fifty with a two and a half story frame colonial, maybe a thousand, eleven hundred square feet. I'm concerned that what's going on in the neighborhood is changing from an R two to possibly somebody looking at it and saying, you know, we've got a lot of rentals, a lot of houses that could be, and we changed, end up changing it to an R three zone, as we did with Fairview Avenue. Now look what's happened. I'm very concerned about that. I'm very concerned that we are going to take a piece of property that's conforming and make two lots that are not conforming and allowing it to, we're going to proliferate small, small lots. And you, Mr. Ricky's analysis of some of the houses being, they're averaging thirty-three feet in width. We have another area in town like that, and we need to take a look, we're going to be taking a look at that. I don't know. I, I don't know.
Are we in the discussion phase, are we still questioning?
We're going to be, I was ranting. Old people do that.
I hadn't noticed.
Well, there was a wise young Realtor once told me, and a couple of middle aged Realtors once told me, that this is, this area is the most desirable area in town right now, the hottest properties in town. Because a lot of the houses, just as the one that you're working on, the widows couldn't, could continue to pay for the house, but they couldn't maintain it. And a lot of these houses have been sold for under $200,000. Somebody comes in and puts a couple, couple of thousand dollars in it and sells. Mrs., Mrs. Miller's house went for 158, sold it for 399. Mr. Jackson's house was 150,000, sold for 330. Mrs. McCauley's house was 370, 378. So the properties are, as one of the Realtors told me, it's being gentrified. That's the term of the day. I think it's an improvement, but I'm not sure if we continue to put houses that are small, or larger on small lots is going to be an improvement. That's my rant.
Do we continue to rant, or are we still in the questioning phase?
We're questioning.
The applicant is still presenting its case.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I have no further questions for Mr. Patel.
I'm very passionate about the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, to your, I would just emphasize two things, and maybe I'll wait till my summation to do that.
Well, if the board is finished questioning Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel should be submitted, you know, subject to questioning by members of the interested public.
Anyone from the audience have any questions on Mr. Patel?
Is this for like general questions?
Just questions of this testimony Mr. Patel has just given. There'll be a time for comments. None?
Hearing none?
You do? Mr. Patel, when do you anticipate finishing the other house?
A couple of weeks, three to four weeks.
Yeah, so actually, this is Tatianisha Towns, 75, there. So that was actually one of my questions was, when do you plan on finishing the house? And are you selling, reselling the house?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you have two projects going on on Third Street right now, right?
The other one hasn't been completed, we have a CO for 43rd.
Okay, all right. I'm glad to see the investment. Okay, Mr. Patel, anybody else have any questions? Okay. Summation?
Real quick. I think to everyone's point, you know, we're seeing, I can tell you from my perspective, we're seeing a lot more interest in the south side of Somerville. We're looking at some of the better values, but these properties need substantial investment as 43rd, as we can see from the improvements from the other property. I think that the infill development is a good decision because it promotes efficient land uses with the existing infrastructure. I also think that, you know, if, you heard from our architect that the, you know, if we take out the square footage for the rec room, it's a 1,579 square foot house, which is square in line with the other, with the other properties on that block. And I think you heard from Mr. Ricky with a very detailed analysis on lot size and lot width and how we conform, we conform to the uses, we conform to the widths. And really, the lot area is because of historic skinny, narrow lots. So I agree with Mr. Ricky that from, from the street facades, this will be consistent. But I think the most important thing, you know, the element to consider that our planner went into is really in an investment. And if you look at the aerial, to me, it looks like, you know, a new home there of this quality, of hardy plank and good modern design, and I think it would fit really well. And I also think it would benefit the, all the neighbors on the street. This would be probably a very good comp for the town and be very good for people that may wish to sell their homes in the future in the south side of Somerville. So with that, I ask that this application be approved with all the conditions enumerated by the board and Mr. Cole. And we look forward to continue to look at more infill development, which is really the direction that we've seen in the last, you know, two years. We're really looking at acquiring lots and doing smaller developments. We see a lot of the larger lots have been taken up. So I think this makes, this sort of follows some of the trends that we're seeing from a market demand perspective. And of course, I, I don't, you know, I don't think putting new construction in an area is really gentrification. I think it's an improvement. And I think that whoever would move in there would respect the conditions outlined with respect to the limitations on the basement and any other, you know, limitations that the board would impose.
Thank you, Mr. Ogronik. Okay, anyone from the audience have any comments about the application? If you do, just come forward, state your name and address.
Questions or comments?
Comments.
Michael Towns, 75, Third Street. First, I want to apologize if I'm not doing this correctly, because I'm not familiar with this.
That's okay.
But I agree, since I've lived on Third Street, that house has been empty. And we have trouble with parking now. Now you're going to put in two houses with driveway, garage, whatever, you're still going to have more people parking there. Because across the street is all two family houses, shared driveways. It's all parking on the street, and Third Street only has one side of the street parked. I'm not opposed to fixing the house. I think he did a great job. I'm opposed to the second house. It doesn't seem, like I said before, I would love a mother, daughter house, but once you start building second houses, dividing lots, to me, it's a money grab. It's, he's not, he's a developer now, because he's going to build the houses and sell them. We're arguing about basements, and I agree, it's not a big deal. But once you sell it, seeing the other houses, seeing the rentals, that's what they're doing over there. They're renting, that's what's going to happen. So I just ask that y'all take in consideration, because I don't know if it's in stone yet, because he has a lot of people here with him. But Fairview is packed. And I don't want Third Street to be like that, because it's already changing. People are selling their houses, 63 is sold for 600,000. I don't know how that happened, I wish y'all would look into that.
He got 600,000 for the 63?
It's on the market right now, it hasn't been, it hasn't been under contract, it's just on the market.
It's, it's being, it's going for a four, it's a four bedroom. And one of the bedrooms is a dining room, so I don't know what's going on there, I wish y'all would look into that. But that is my gripe. I want him to fix the house, it's beautiful, but there's nothing wrong with having a house with a big lot. But once you want to divide it and make a second house, the parking's bad already, it's going to start looking like Fairview. And you see how tight it is over there.
Now, if we put a mother, daughter, that would also increase the amount of people that live in the home because now you have a mother, daughter.
And they would be family members, they would be family members.
Right, but it would still increase the same amount of cars and the argument of the parking is still.
You're talking about redoing a house, selling it, making it, dividing a lot, selling two houses. You got two separate families with multiple levels. It won't be mother, daughter, it'll be something totally different. But that's just my opinion. This man, he's trying to make his money, that's on him. But that's what I think will happen. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments on the application? Will someone from the board make a, make a motion to close the public portion of this application? Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Board, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll start.
I generally, I understand the problems of parking. As you know, my neighborhood has changed over the years, and we have similar type situations. But having said that, we do need housing, I mean, there's no question about that. Infill housing is probably one of the few ways left in this town to build housing. All the major properties, as far as I know, are gone, unless you start tearing things down. And I prefer not to see that. This particular building, the new one, looks like a house to me. I mean, anybody can buy a house and rent it to anybody. I mean, that's just how it is, or you could own it for a while, move out and rent it. We can't control that. It is a house. The basement doesn't concern me so much because as a kid, I played in my electric trainsets all winter in the basement. I lived in the basement, I could see how that could happen.
Still have mine.
Yeah, see what I mean?
So did I.
Would I like to see a minor residential sprinkler system tied to the domestic? Sure. Can we make them do that, I don't think so, right? Yeah, but if they want to do it, we won't stop them. But it's a basement, it's a recreation area. I grew up in the south end of town, on the southwest end of town, and we had several Italian families, and they all had basement bathrooms, I mean, everybody was down there, I mean, that's just how it was. It was an ethnic neighborhood, and that's what was there. So it doesn't sound so different to me. All in all, I think it's a good project. Correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, but I think we're going to lessen the water damage flowing off the property because the house itself would be impervious. If it's designed right, the roof and the gutter system will catch the water that's now flowing on the grass and directed to the street. So in my little Irish way of thinking, I think we're putting less water off the property and more into the street.
Yeah, that's the testimony from Dave Stires, is that we're going to do the roof leaders for both dwellings to the street. So the off, the runoff will be less if the flow is from west to east onto the adjoining property.
Right, that's how I understood it.
Right.
Finally, I'm right after all these years. But instead of, we're going to correct that problem, hopefully. As far as somebody living in the basement, they won't be there for 45 minutes before the phone's going to ring in Borough Hall. I mean, that's a given. So that, I think, is controllable. And I don't think as a board, we could sit here and tell somebody they can't be in the basement or they can't do this. I don't, I don't think we, I don't think that's within our purview. It's a house. And if they want to have the kids sleeping over down there on a weekend, which my daughter did for years all through high school, you let it happen, that's what a house is for. Will it generate more cars? Yeah, I live up on West Cliff Street, do we have more cars than that when I moved there? Absolutely. We just had to learn to live with it.
Less horses.
Well, there are fewer horses, yeah. And I do remember them, so.
So do I.
Yeah, but I'll shut up and just say, I'm in favor of this thing, I don't, I don't. Yeah, but I'll shut up and just say, I'm in favor of this thing. I don't, I don't see a, a real downsized outside of change in the neighborhood.
Stu?
Yeah, I, I like the application because it simply, it promotes housing. And listen, I remember when Somerville, we didn't have these problems, you know, twenty years ago, you know? But people want to be here. We have a lot of development here, and I wanted to piggyback over what Roberta said in regards to the basement. We can't put on this applicant what we think might happen. What he is testifying to us today is what we're gonna have to accept. However, some of the concerns that we do have with basements, like mold, moisture, sanitary sewer backup into the basement. Is it gonna be waterproofed? You know, maybe the window wells need to be deeper for egress so that in the event that somebody's children is sleeping down there, can they get out? You know, and those are the things that, as a board, I believe that we can address and make sure that we put these appropriate provisions in place to make sure that when this is being constructed, that it happens. But beyond that, you know, I, I don't, I don't see why we need to continue to beat up an applicant about a basement. Certainly when he intends to sell the property. And that's where I stand. I, I, look, you know, it's, um, it's a street that certainly would love the redevelopment, and maybe encourages the homeowners on that street to spruce it up a bit. And you know what? I, I'm in favor for it, you know, and, and that's, that's my position.
Yeah, similar to, to Rich and Stu. The big thing for me was really looking at the lot and looking at the lots across the street and seeing that the frontage is, you know, almost triple of the, the lots across the street. It made good, it, it, it seems like good planning to me to put a, a good structure in place there for additional housing. And I think it is, it's not a, an excessive house. It's, it's, it seems like it will be a very nice house. And I think it will fit in with the character of the neighborhood. And for those reasons, I believe that we should approve it.
Ryan?
Yeah, I, uh, detached single-family. You know, that's a thumbs up for me. You know, it's like, because that, that brings, from, in my experience, that brings in families that want to invest in that neighborhood instead of just another multifamily, where it's, people are turned, you know? So to have a single-family detached homes, families buy those. Now, yeah, they might be rented or whatever, but the majority of single-family homes are owned by families. So that, to me, is someone who's going to invest their time in that neighborhood. Not rent it just to go to the next. They're gonna stay there. They're gonna live there. So, and like you were saying, when you look at the properties across the street, I mean, they're... So, and I understand what the chairman said about, but I live on a, a lot that's like that. My lot's about twenty feet wide, you know, and I, you know, I have no problem with it. So, yes, there's more cars. What, what are we gonna do? I, I, you know, I don't know. I'm just, I'm happy about that it's detached, single-family homes for a change, which I think brings in families. So that's, that's what I think.
Well, I have to agree with the gentlemen that have spoken before me. This reminds me very much of the prop of the house we just approved on South Gaston. On South Gaston and Fairview. It's a very small house, but it, and it's going to be very compact, but it fits on the lot. The, this one's going to be owner-occupied. Mr. Patel has a very good reputation with his other developments that are underway in town. And we're not seers. We, we don't know who's going to live there, how many kids, if any, they're gonna have, how many dogs they're gonna have, how many cars they're gonna have. We just know that this is intended to be owner-occupied, and I think that's a benefit to Somerville, and it's a very nice-looking house.
Rich, you, you have anything else?
No, I'll pass.
You're done? This is a no-brainer. To, kudos to Mr. Patel for wanting to put a significant amount of money into Third Street. Long time coming. We approved this, what, six years ago, aren't? The other, the other building, and it was an eyesore. It's been an eyesore. It's nice to get rid of it, and hopefully, you're gonna do very well with it. I approve it.
I love ninety-nine point five percent of this. Seriously, the, the architecture, the facade is great. I, I love, I, I rode down Third Street and Second and Fourth, and I love seeing that neighborhood, people putting time into that neighborhood, include, including yourself. It's starting, it's starting to, uh, starting to show, so I really appreciate everything that you're doing here, and I love ninety-nine point five percent of it. You know the point five, what the point five percent is. And I ju, I've said my piece about my concerns, but I, I appreciate the wisdom of the other board members here. And I think overall, I think it's gonna be a positive.
I like the house. It's, um, I'm not too worried about the basement. I think my wife wishes there was an extra bathroom downstairs to banish me to. So, I mean, as the codes are in place, it's gonna be a co-compliant house. I'm not too worried about the rest of the stuff that, you know, some of the concerns have been raised. So it's a, it's a yes for me.
As of nine o'clock this morning, when I walked that neighborhood, or walked down to take a look at it again, I was against it. I was against, uh, creating two small lots that are non-compliant. Looking at what Mr. Ricky had said about the, the lots, I know every house on that neighborhood. And there are, most of them are small. Would you continue to proliferate that? It is what it is. Mr. Ricky, Dave Stires, their testimony kind of convinced me it can work. And knowing, uh, Mr. Patel and what he has done in the, with other properties, what he and his father have done, they're good landlords. Problem with some of the homes in the neighborhood are not because of the landlord, uh, the, the owner occupied. It's some landlords and some of the tenants. Some, you have some good, good landlords, you have some, a couple of bad landlords, you have a couple, you have a lot of good tenants and a couple of bad. It's a good neighborhood. I think this will work. You, you've convinced me, where my position has always been, you're not gonna be able to do this. You're not gonna be able to put a house here and still have twenty feet of side yard on a four-thousand-square-foot lot. I'm in favor of it now. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
It's the, we the first house built on Third Street since two thousand and three. And the first new one on that entire block since two thousand and three, and there's another one being built on Hamilton Street right now. So I'm happy with the capital investment. I really am. And when they're getting six, six hundred thousand dollars for that house up the street, oh, yeah. Oh, man, they'd be looking. Any other comments? Someone like to move the application?
I'll move it.
Move. Second by Mr. Carpenitz? Michael, you have anything?
Only clarification on the architect's testimony about this windows on the side. What is the board's feeling on that? Is the windows, as depicted, adequate?
I, I like windows.
Well, that's, I'm just looking for a direction on whether, the architect had said we could put more windows in. I'm just getting a feel whether the board would like to see more windows on those two facades.
Yeah, I think it opens it up, makes it more.
Bathroom in the stairs, you think, Mike?
Well, I can work it out. I'm sure the architect has some ideas that, let him drive the ship so he can say what's most appropriate for additional windows to break up the massing. The board's looking for some more windows. I'll leave it to his discretion how many windows and where. I'm sure we can come up with it.
Sure.
Should we do that as a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Cliff, you have anything? The only thing I had was, Michael and I were just discussing it. Compliance with his report, of course. Anything in connection with stormwater management?
No, the test, well, just that the testimony from Dave Stires was that they're gonna get runoff to the street, and the post runoff will match the, the runoff from existing conditions. So the pre and post will match, and the roof leaders from both structures are going to the street.
Okay.
Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
On the strength of Mr. Stires' testimony, I'll, I'll craft a condition along those lines. Beyond that, compliance with your report and compliance with our standard conditions of approval. Mr. O'Grady, you're familiar with those. I presume they're not a problem?
No problem.
It's been moved in second, and we've got the input from Mike and Cliff. Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ed Allot?
Yes.
Roberta Carpenitz?
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin?
Yes.
Rich O'Neill?
Yes.
Brian Budemski?
Yes.
John Flores?
Yes.
Eric Alvarez?
Yes.
And Stuart Daniels.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Michael, I'll coordinate the preparation of resolution with your office. I would think it would probably be November, but we'll see. You know, we'll see. Okay, Ryan, what do you have for us next? I think we have a second meeting this month, do we not?
Two eighty-one East Man was supposed to be heard tonight, but is being postponed because they did not drop off their revised plans within ten days prior to tonight's hearing date.
Right.
So we have the option of carrying them to October fifteenth with the sixty-nine West End application, or carrying them to November nineteenth, I believe it is, which is the third Wednesday in November, and our only meeting that month.
Ryan, did they get the information to us? Is it in the office yet?
It is in the office, but it was dropped off on Tuesday, which is less than ten days.
Well, well, so the, well, this is clarified. There's a stormwater report that was done, but the site plan...
Talking about the main street?
This is, I'm referring to two eighty-one. Ed, your comment was what, whether the needed information was provided. That's a very good comment to start with. The information was provided in a separate stormwater report. However, it's not shown on the drawings that showed the catch basins in the parking lot. It's not, the question is, I, I thought we left the last testimony that we're gonna show exactly what the proposed renovations to facade's gonna be, the addition, the roof. We're gonna show the piping on the catch basin, the proposed layout, and the stormwater management leaving the site. The drawings that were submitted do not show the catch basins in the runoff. They are talked about in a separate report. So, Ed, it begs the question, do you, does the board want to see the catch basins and the, the existing stormwater on the report that shows the parking lot, because right now, it doesn't show that.
Board has the discretion to ask for that information.
Mike, does anybody know where that water goes? You know, it's gotta go west.
It, it goes to the west, to the catch basin on eastern, is it eastern, eastern state? Is that what the, is that the side street right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes to the catch basin.
So there's a pipe underground, or is it?
There's a twelve-inch reinforced concrete pipe that catches the runoff from the property and the adjoining properties, and it goes to the west of that catch basin.
Has anybody looked at it?
I, I met the applicant on site. They employed Steve Parker to do the survey. It's just, I think, for time constraints, the, it's not, it's a plot plan. It's a site plan. It's a drawing. The drawing doesn't even show the catch basins. The drawing, the board we saw originally had the two catch basins and the catch basin, and the question is, where's the piping? What's going on here?
Who owns the pipe?
That, I, I don't know, because I haven't, it's not on the drawing showing the property line, Rich. There is a report done by Parker that was submitted, as Ryan said, that talks about stormwater management, but it's not shown on the drawings that, that have the parking lot.
Is there an easement for that pipe going west?
I can't have any comment. I haven't reviewed it, Rich.
Okay, okay.
All right, the question, back to Ed's comment, is, does the board want to see the catch basin and piping with the proposed parking lot all in one drawing? Right now, it's not the case.
Well, it should be, right?
That's how I see it.
Pretty much what you asked.
I thought the charge was, you wanted to see everything. The layout, grading, catch basin, piping, addition, all in one set of documents. So the public and the board had the benefit of looking at one set of documents.
And it's not unusual to ask for that information, or is it excessive?
But this may take us into a whole, whose pipe is it? Who maintains it?
Right.
Rich, I just can't, I, what, how they did it is, the plan was revised to show everything but the stormwater and the grading. That was submitted on the Friday, which is ten days.
Yeah.
And that the stormwater management was not addressed until the following Wednesday in a separate document, so...
Does the borough have an obligation to take a look at that pipe that comes to our catch basin?
I have talked to DPW about whether they have ownership, whose pipe it is.
They don't know.
And, that's exactly right, Rich.
I figured that.
But I have not, since, as the board knows, if it's gonna be heard, the report goes out a, a week before. Since it was within ten days, I did not prepare the report, so I don't have specific details, Rich. Of course, I have to answer this. Is, is the pipe on the, on the applicant's property? Who's maintaining the pipe if it's not the borough?
It'll be full of dirt.
Right. Is the property off-site, so the applicant, doesn't have to, the questions you're asking are basic, in my opinion, basic questions that...
That's all I'm good at, is basically.
They're fundamental. Yeah, fundamental material.
Fundamental, that, who's, is it adequate piping?
But I'm just thinking, we're gonna have a meeting. They're gonna sit here. We...
I would, look...
Why don't we just push it to the nineteenth?
Right, but I, I agree, Art, but I'm saying, I agree with Morgan that it all should be shown on one plan so we can see the orientation of everything.
Let them know what we want.
But if the pipe isn't functioning...
They'll have time to, to get over it.
I understand your point.
Okay, all right, just so we understand.
I understand, and I will certainly address, Rich, your comments about maintenance. Is it on the property? Is it off-site? Is there an easement? What's the flow? I agree.
Yeah, okay, because most, we have a meeting, we sit here, so you fix the park, you fix everything, but the pipe doesn't work.
I got it. You're saying, this is wonderful.
All right, I'll go away.
The question, I, I think Ryan and I guess Mike's here too, is the question of timing. Does the board want both applications in one hearing or separate them?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board. Just if you could, for the benefit of my client, give me an email to Mr. Parker detailing exactly what you want, or what you think the board wants with, with respect to the additional catch basin, layout, grading, piping.
I can certainly have the...
Yeah.
Yeah, just so everybody's...
I had talked to your applicant...
That's a fair request.
Last night, and I said I would bring this up to make sure it was clear what's being asked so that we, we address this issue for communication. I agree, Mike.
Yeah, just so.
I, a hundred percent.
So if we go with the November meeting, they'll give them enough time to, to get that information.
Yes.
Is your other application on for this month, the West End?
It'll be on for next month, or, or for next two weeks from now.
That's correct, so our next meeting will be the sixty-nine West End application.
So, Mike, since you're here, is there gonna be any submittals for that, or we're gonna go with? The report was, it was prepared, and there was some questions in the report. I just didn't know if they're gonna be addressed prior to the hearing, or...
I will talk to the site team. I'll talk to the professionals.
There's some challenging things regarding accessibility to the first floor units that...
Okay, okay, yeah.
I just don't know what the thought is.
All right, I'll, I'll follow up with you offline. And you said nineteenth for the, for the other one?
Meeting next month?
Two, two weeks, there'll be another meeting, and then the nineteenth is November.
Well, we're going back to just one meeting in November, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. Correct.
There's one meeting in November and one in December, right, Ryan?
Correct, and one in January.
All right, go ahead, up.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ryan?
There will be a presentation at Monday's council meeting. offering some insight as far as economic insight for the future. Uh, this is kind of following up the planning board's reexamination of the master plan. So the whole board is invited and encouraged to attend. Hopefully, if you're available, you'll be there. If not, it's available for recording, or you can tune in live from, uh, from your house. And then, the last thing would be eighty-five, eighty-seven Fairview Avenue.
Yeah, there's an application that's coming in front of this board. They're asking for a waiver for preparing the drawings. Yes, I, that's essentially what Ryan said to them in email, that they're not proposing any site additions, and they're saying, because we're not proposing improvements, they don't wanna do the drawings. Is that a correct characterization?
Correct, so I understand the property's owned by a Realtor, um, or their LLC or the Realtor company, um, and they have somebody who wants to come in and do the development, but they're afraid of putting on any money to the project until they know that the use of a two-family is approved. It's currently, or it was approved to be a group home. That use was abandoned, and although two-family homes are permitted, they need to seek relief for a side yard setback.
Right.
Uh, it needs to be minimum ten. They have nine right now. So they'd come before the board for, uh, the approval for the change of use regardless of the side yard setback. Um, and then who's ever gonna be doing all the work to actually convert it back to a two-family, they'd come again at a future date to propose all those changes.
So they wanna bifurcate it?
Correct, yes. Kind of.
Why can't the, why can't the buyer, um, can't give me the application?
The most information that I have, um, from the app, from the applicant, um, is through email and it's basically saying that the company or individual who's interested in doing the work doesn't wanna put up any money until they know the use is approved.
Right, they, the, Steve, the, the issue here is typically the drawings are done, so it's memorialized, it's signed, so there's a record, a legal record.
Right.
What's going on and what the board approved. Now, without that, I don't know how the board, there's nothing to look at. You're looking at, what, I guess you're looking at writing, a paragraph, or they're gonna describe what they're doing, but there's no plot plan, yeah, there's no...
Correct.
Basically, it becomes a concept.
It's very challenging to do, to do this, uh, because...
We had, we, we discussed bifurcate before, and the last, what, you just said, oh, Mr. Chair, that was like maybe fifty years ago, something like that. It was a long time ago since...
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Yeah.
Where did Mike go?
Sorry, um, I was just saying that it was a long time since we've
Bifurcated.
bifurcated.
Right.
Application, so why do it now? And the buyer can certainly come in and apply if they have that much interest in doing what they wanna do with the property. Why can't the buyer come in and be an applicant?
They obviously, obviously, it's, in my opinion, not a heavy lift to show a location map, the existing survey, with where, where the relief is requested with the checklist, which is a two-hundred-foot list. It's not a heavy lift still, but they're asking for a waiver for the reasons Ryan said, so I...
The board doesn't have to bifurcate. If the board believes that it needs to make, needs, uh, believes that it needs a site plan in order to approve the application, the board can request or insist on the information. I understand that the buyer, or the person involved doesn't wanna put the money up, but I, you know, that's generally isn't... I mean, again, I, it's up to the board, but it's important to understand you do have a certain amount of discretion in this and, uh, approving a, approving a material variance, which is what this is, without a site plan, may not be what the board wants to do. The board may wanna see both.
Well, the issue on this is it's a plot plan, it's not a site plan, so I'm not even sure you could bifurcate it.
Well, that's correct too.
It's a one and two family, so you're not dealing with a site plan, it'd be a plot plan unless you say...
No, you're correct, and a plot plan is not what we understand legally to be a site plan.
Right.
So I think that's a no in the waiver.
No, I get it, I get it. I, I, look, as the board knows, if applicants can certainly ask for waivers of the basic checklist...
Right.
And any of these waivers, I bring to the board for, uh, a decision, guidance. So this is no different than what's been done in the past.
Right.
And, uh, that's why, Ryan, that's why it's been discussed.
I've also had this conversation with Art previously behind closed doors and communicated with the applicant that the board wouldn't be open to waiving this, um, and they're still persisting that they think that the waiver should be provided, so glad we were able to put it on the record, so there's no disputing what the board wants now.
Sounds like they need to...
Well, the, the board has the final discretion with that. The applicant can request it, but if the board has reasons not to grant a waiver, then it should, it should not, it should not grant it. But I mean, that's, again, that's a very much a discretionary issue.
I think, like, I got the direction. I think Ryan has the direction. And switching gears, I, I don't know if the, if Art, you wanna go into executive for an update on certain matters, just real briefly.
Okay, just one thing. Um, I wasn't here for the, uh, the last meeting. Before we got this and all of that, we used to have VILL TV, and what we could do, if we missed it, was get a copy of the, the unedited disc and watch it and then certify that we're familiar, we've watched it and we're familiar with it.
Right.
So we could vote on it. Does this still work with YouTube?
You can watch to YouTube. I, I, I do believe Mike is doing, uh, a one transcript for everything for two eighty-one. Is that the plan? Yeah, I, I haven't seen a transcript from the last meeting, but I thought you were, I thought that one transcript for, is that, is that not true?
We should have it.
Oh, we should have it, okay, then you can...
Yeah, I think he did.
Okay, then you can certainly read the transcript.
Yeah, if you, if you read the transcript, you can certify, and you can sign a certification, and that's, that's exactly the same thing.
I wanted to get that on the record, so, for future... Okay. Any other business to come before the board?
We, are we gonna do an executive session or anything like this?
Someone like to move that we go into an executive session?
Okay.
I'll move it.
Move second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gonna go into executive session, go in back.
Can everybody brush it out and mute their microphones while we're gone, please?
How, how do you become a board member?
Oh, dear.
You get appointed.
Seriously? Are all y'all from Somerville?
Yeah.
Everybody? Okay.
All right, whatever you wanna do, whatever you wanna do. I just wanna make sure, the nineteenth, I mean, nineteenth is in the middle of the...
Y'all don't know? Y'all, you're a board member, what are you gonna do?
You get appointed by the, by the mayor.
Okay.
You usually submit a resume to Ryan.
Okay.
And then he works his way through to the, you know, town, mayor's office or whatever.
Well, my wife is looking to come up here.
Who, who, who's that?
I just got a tough day, volunteer.
No, who, what, you said our next door neighbor, which one?
Who?
Oh, Hassan, really?
Oh, Ha, oh Ha.
Yeah.
Oh Ha, the one that didn't show up? That's the most infect, the one that's most infected?
Was it zoning for?
Essentially, they're being allowed to do, so there's a lot of discrepancies.
No problem.
The biggest purpose of the board is to approve applications for single-family homes and anything that requires the variance. The planning board is more so about creating ordinances, uh, laws and rules in town. And then there's, uh, any applications that are not licensed examples and they don't have any variance. So anything that's a big development and only see variances is forwarded. But yeah, it's very complicated. Currently, yes, uh, we're, it's multiple members.
What's going on? Hitting that pavement, huh? I hear you. There it is, keep it up. I know, I'm with you in spirit. Yeah. Yeah, right? You, you just made me, every time I see you, I was like, damn, I gotta get out of here.
You have to watch.
Yeah, I gotta get, I gotta get into work, but I'm like, I'm bored.
I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm probably better off talking to a board member as far as what you want to put on your resume, 'cause I would be revealing it, I would just be like...
Thank you, Ryan, thank you.
The one that you give it to, um... Uh, it's, yeah, if he would eventually reveal, he would, probably would be the only ones to reveal it. Um, I don't know exactly who would be looking at it, but it's not his sole decision. Um, it's probably a committee of group people that are gonna discuss, you know.
It's not funny. You won with a thousand votes. You could do it.
You lost, Ryan?
I don't know. You get any mail there?
This is pretty gone, Mike, where's Ryan?
I really hope all these lights are muted.
I really hope all these lights are muted. You lost Ryan?
I thought you were gonna go out.
You need me in there?
Whoa, this is for going, like, we're trying.
I really hope all these lights are muted.
Mr. Milaklin, please return to your seat.
That's right, we need a quorum, right, Roberto?
Yeah.
There are litigators when they're speaking. So, uh, you're a conservative category of a litigator. Why I drive a Chrysler instead of a SL, a circle or SL?
I like the Chrysler more than the SL. Okay, someone-
Make a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll move. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, someone like to move the adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, carry.